Good afternoon. Welcome.
On here. Welcome to the second briefing for the Tuesday, May 30th, 2024, meeting coming forward. And we have two discussion items today. One is we're going to hear the Audit Committee report to the Board, and Commissioner Linville will do that in a minute. Then we're going to have a presentation on Piedmont Hoist and Crane. And actually, I think we're going to have Daniel Gorty from Cherry Beckett. And Daniel, where is he? Oh, there he is. We just, just come on up. You can, I think you're going to have part of that presentation to begin, and then I think we'll have some action. And am I correct on the Gorty?
It's perfectly fine, but it's Gogarty.
Gorty. Gorty. Gorty.
But no, I've had much worse than that.
Gotcha. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right. Well, I'm going to get right into it for you all today. I'm proud to be able to present to you the audit results for 2023. As always, I always kind of started off just kind of recognizing our team as well that did the hard work. It's not just me that did this, this team below me that really did all the heavy lifting to get this done. And so we have Albert Ong, that is the manager on this job, and then Carly Coleman was the senior on this engagement, and they really were instrumental in getting this completed for you all here today. We perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That's all in which to provide an opinion, provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. We provide also an opinion on compliance with your federal and state dollars as well. In both instances, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion, and the highest level opinion we can give under our auditing standards. This slide is a long way of just saying that we do issue an audit opinion on compliance, but we do not issue an opinion over the effectiveness of any internal controls. We do look at internal controls as part of our audit. This one defines for you all as each year is just to help remind you of the different types of control findings we may have as part of our audit. Material weakness being one in which a material error could go undetected or a material noncompliance could go undetected on a timely basis. And then a significant deficiency being one less than a material weakness, but still an area that we think is important to notify you all of that needs to be remediated in the next year. We did notice three significant deficiencies that I'll talk to you about in the next two slides, and there were no material weaknesses noted in the current year. The first one that we identified as a significant deficiency has to do with the Medicaid program. We found no instances of noncompliance, so we didn't find any instance where someone received benefits that shouldn't have received benefits. But under the control process that the county has, 13 of the 60 items we selected did not have a follow-up on those errors with the person that did the determination. Those errors, again, did not result in any ineligible recipients, but they still are nonetheless documentation errors that should be remediated as well. The next one is on the ELC, also known Epidemiology Grant. This has to do with your Department of Public Health, and this had to do with a duplicate item that was requested for reimbursement twice that was only incurred once. And so that's an amount of $22,000 that was over-reported there. And it was only one item out of 22 that we identified. The one here is, last one here is the State Capital Infrastructure Grant, also known as a SCIF funding for your Blues Lake and the airport. And in both these instances, it has nothing to do with any allowable or unallowable costs. It's had to do with reporting. So this was just a matter of not filing the reports on a timely basis with the state. We had no corrected or uncorrected adjustments, so as part of our audit, we review and audit all the information within the financial statements that's significant. And in all of our testing, we noted that the information was fairly presented by management, and we had no adjustments to that information from what they had. Next few slides are kind of general information that we have to give you every single year. I'll go through this fairly quickly, but please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Note one is where your significant accounting policies lie. You did have a new accounting pronouncement that you adopted in the current year. This was subscription-based information technology arrangements, and this had to do with your subscriptions to software and such that you have over more than one year that gets recorded as an asset and a liability on your books now, similar to the lease standard that you adopted last year. We found no issues with any related party transactions. No related party transactions were noted, other than those that were made aware to us by management, and we noted no arms-length transaction issues. We found no issues that we deem to be significant or unusual under our definitions that we need to make you aware of. As part of our audit, there are a number of estimates that go into number of the financial statement line items, such as your pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, your capital assets, your allowance for downfall counts, your IBNR for incurred but not reported, claims for self-insurance. In all these instances, we looked at the underlying data and the information used to develop these estimates and found no issues with that data, and we found no issues or management bias with any of those estimates. All the financial statement disclosures were clear, neutral, and consistent. For nonattest services, that being a service outside of our audit that we performed for you, we did have two services here. We have preparation of a data collection form, which is a form we file with the federal government over the federal wards that we've audited, and then accounting consulting services for general reconciliation and the ERP standard reporting system. In all cases, we were not in a role where we were making any management decisions. Management ultimately was overseeing our services, and they accepted and approved all our services and had a role to play within every service we provided. We had no difficulties encountered. We had no disagreements with management. There were no consultations from internally in our audit department. There were no, we have a management representation letter that was dated May 17th, the day the financial statements were issued. There were no shopping for an opinion, no management consultations with accountants that we're aware of, no other findings or issues to note. As a date of this presentation, no fraud, illegal acts, or violations of laws that were noted to us as related to the county, and no going concern to note. The next two slides here just talk about some other information within the financial statements, our responsibilities, the required supplemental information. This is your management discussion analysis and your pension schedules in the back following the notes. Both of those, we do look over that information, but we do not audit the information or provide any opinion on that information. For supplementary information, these are budget-to-actual schedules and combining schedules in the back that summarize data that's in your financial statements in the front. We make sure that they are relevant and they make sense based on the data in the front, and there's no, any issues with that information, and we issue an in relation to opinion on that information. And then the last is the other information, which is your letter of transmittal and other information in the front of the financial statements in the statistical section, which is in the back of the financial statements. We do read that information, but we do not provide an opinion on it or any assurance on it. These are just a number of governmental county standard board statements that have been issued in the last couple of years that will be effective for the county, none of which we think will be significant for the county to encounter over the next two or three reporting Now, the next two slides are my last two slides, and has to do with the Local Government Commission. As you know, the Local Government Commission has required us to present in front of the Board each year their fund balance availability in the general fund. One thing I just note here always is that committed and restricted balances are considered available for this calculation's purposes, where you, as a Board, maybe do not consider that as actually available. So this number may look higher than you're used to seeing on your regular basis because of that, and because also debt service fund is included in this balance as well. And so you can see here, you're at 33% this year, which is well above that threshold of 60%. But again, if you look at your regular thresholds that you look at, you're probably dealing more with a lower number there than the 33%, and that's the reason for the difference. And here, we noted there was no issues with any budgeted tax levy not being collected. No, you had positive general fund balance. You have a pre-effective, pre-audit process with no pervasive budget violations, no late debt service payments or covenant violations, no statutory violations. And there's only one item that does require your addressing to the Local Government Commission, and that's the submission of the audit after that December 1st, 2023 due date there. So I will open it up if anyone has any questions.
I'll ask Commissioner Linville if he has anything that he would like to add on behalf of the committee. You've covered the report, but I, Chair of the Committee, if he is interested, that'd be great.
I don't have anything addition, other than what you mentioned that the committee did meet earlier today, and the auditor went over exactly what he's gone over here in some of the, well, in the discussion with our staff, some of the delays related to some different systems that they've gone to, and hopefully in the future that the difficulties that they've had working through those systems will be better, and maybe that won't occur. So this, this kind of work is complicated enough, and as I said in the meeting, and I say it in this meeting too, if it's not complicated enough, regulators may complicate regulations more. So I said "may," I didn't say "will." I picked what I thought a better word.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to recognize also the county staff and their help in getting this completed, and Terry and Lee, who are here today, and then everyone else throughout the county, whether it be DSS, public health, Parks and Rec, and airport, that helped us get through this audit.
Good. Well, I'd like to say thank you. First of all, always great to get a clean audit report. And in the Audit Committee, we had a chance to discuss the significant deficiencies, the three items, and I think, certainly I think all of us would agree that, very satisfied that everybody understands those issues that were done. There's some staff involved, there's some training. We're in good shape. And then obviously, on the third one, we got to get our reports in Raleigh on time, which is very understandable. But, and I do want to add the special recognition and thanks to our Chief Financial Officer, Terry, for doing all the great work, and it has been a, I think to say that the last since our ERP, which is a new computerized all-accounting system and all that kind of stuff, has gone into place. It's been a challenging, that's an understatement, challenging period, and she and her staff have been able to respond and get us to this point, and she was, certainly, things are now, as the audit firm indicated, the data when they got it, there were no problems. There were no things to check. Now it's just a matter of catching up 2024 to get to that same point, and we know what to do. It's now doing it while we're doing all of our current work on top of it, but I think we're in a, compared to this time last year, we are light years ahead. So special thank you to you and your staff.
Appreciate it.
Anything else you'd like to add, Terry? Anything you'd like to mention?
I think I did share in the Audit Committee, you know, an appreciation for the support of the Board in allowing us the additional resources that were needed to help, you know, get us to this point. And we do still have significant work ahead of us, but we're committed to getting through it and getting there and getting back into a normal course of business. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for being over here.
Chairman, if I may, before he leaves, I do have a question. I did all of the sentiments, but I do have a question relative to the grant that you noted from the state.
The State Capital Infrastructure Fund.
Yeah, and whether or not we were fined for that.
No, I don't believe you were fined, or that you did receive a letter from them that said these were missed reports that were filed not timely, but it did not result in any question cost or payment back to the state.
Okay, fair enough. That's all I had. Thank you, Chairman.
And thank you, Commissioner McDaniel. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here, Daniel. All righty, we're going to have the update on Piedmont Hoist and Crane, and it looks like Kyle Haney is going to bring us that, and I think we've got a slide or two to look
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I know this is an issue that has come to this Board several times over the last couple of years. Specifically, I know in some public sessions, there have been some complaints. So I wanted to give you a summary of where the Piedmont Hoist and Crane issues are, and then also, the CEO of Piedmont Hoist and Crane is here, Mr. Rich Burns, so you may, he provides some information. If the Board would like to hear from him, he's been willing to speak as well. So just a little bit of background. Piedmont Hoist and Crane is a business that manufactures overhead cranes and crane components. They're located at 3350 Temple School Road in Winston-Salem. The county began receiving some noise complaints from neighbors in 2021, specifically neighbors who are residents on Gray Tuck Drive and Stacy Court. I've got a map on the next screen. I'll show you where that is. There were complaints regarding noise coming onto their property that was regarding outdoor abrasive sandblasting that was performed on the Piedmont Hoist and Crane site. So I'm going to point here with my arrow. So this is Temple School Road here, Piedmont Hoist and Crane. It's located here. There's their facility. This is approximately the location of that sandblasting. Gray Tuck Drive is here, to the left of that property, and then Stacy Court is down here. So when the county received these complaints, staff has gone out and monitored the noise levels at the site numerous times since the complaints began in 2021. They've monitored both the ambient noise and sandblasting noise at Gray Tuck and Stacy Court as well, but I think the numbers that are here are from Gray Tuck, which is closer to that property. So you can see, these are some of the early sound readings that we had when the complaint started. So you can see the ambient noise averaged 52 to 58 decibels, and then the noise while sandblasting was 61 to 75 decibels. And then you can also see the peak noise is there, ambient noise 60, peak was 2.9 to 80. So staff then engaged Piedmont Hoist and Crane, including the CEO, Mr. Rich Burns, regarding these community complaints and requested mitigation be done to decrease those noise levels. After those meetings, the company did do some voluntary mitigation efforts. So they replaced the blaster nozzles with quieter models, I should say quieter, models in 2022 and 2023. They also created a structure around the blasting site that was made up of two steel cargo containers and arch frame support, and installed some sound-reducing fabric along the fence line. Staff from the county continued to monitor the sound at Gray Tuck Drive, and you can see here, has the same premitigation and ambient noise, but the postmitigation did decrease from those efforts. So you can see a decrease in where that is, the postmitigation against the ambient sound. Today, at this point, we're unaware of any further efforts that Piedmont Hoist and Crane has committed to mitigate the sound, but you can see kind of where the status is here. And then I believe Mr. Rich Burns, if the Board desires, can come up and speak to what they have going on.
Questions for Kyle before we call on Mr. Burns? All righty, thank you. Mr. Burns, please come forward. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me today. No doubt that we've had some sound issues early on. We have done quite a bit of mitigation, and we continue to monitoring sound. So sound is kind of like a ghost sometimes. It depends on who's hearing what, at what time, and where they're at. So what I want to do is walk you through what our blasting operation looks like, and that what we continue to do to monitor the sound and where we are at today. Piedmont's been in business since 1993. I started it 31 years ago. We have customers like the U.S. Navy, Boeing. Our cranes are used to build aircraft carriers, submarines, and Caterpillar right up the road. We have 110 cranes in there. So we're a nationwide company, and we're one of the top crane providers in the country. We started out at Guilford County, and the facility there was too small for us to expand. Found the site probably 2017, had a first operation there, and then we brought our whole operation over there because it was better suited for us to do what we do. I think at first, we started with probably 35 employees in the state, I mean, in the county of Forsyth, and now we're over 100. So we are growing. We're continuing to grow. But I can tell you, we want to be a good neighbor. You know, we are a State Farm. We want to be a good neighbor. So I'm here committed to helping our neighbors and continue to make sure that it's a, you know, a good place for them to live without irritating sounds. I understand the complaint. I gave you two sheets. So first one is basically a decibel reading on what different levels of decibels are to kind of give you an idea of what is loud, what is not loud, what OSHA considers loud. So that first page, basically, anything above 70 is considered harmful, hearing protections required, that kind of thing. Below there, it kind of gives you examples of what 70, 60, 50, 40 is. The Google map that he pulled up really didn't have our facility on there, so I did a recent picture. So the first Big Eleven by 17 shows where our facility is, and right in the middle is a little white dot, and that's where our blasting operation is. Now, this is our blasting operation, right here. We have containers, sound-proofed containers on each side, and we also have a roof. This was in response to the first complaint when the noise was loud. And I went over there, and I listened, and I'm like, yeah, it's loud. There's no doubt about it. So we did something about it, and you can actually see the guy blasting there within the containment area. The next page is a picture from our facility looking out. That's about 75 feet away towards our facility, and the next page, I'm 75 foot away, and I'm holding the sound meter, recording sound coming up the north, because it's a three-sided contained area. The noise is going to go out where there's no containment, which is up towards my office. So my office would be the loudest place because that's where all the noise goes. That's 78 during a current blast. So 75 feet away, 78 on my yard, it's loud. It's, you know, it's a lawnmower. Let's call it that. Now, the very next page, which is this one, I'm standing right next to the container, probably 15 feet away from where we're blasting. And as you can see, that's reading 74. So I'm a lot closer, but the decibel levels is less because of the containment that we do. Then lastly, off the south side, I'm 75 feet away, and I got the noise level down to 62, and that's still on our property. But as you can see, based on where we are, and the containment that we've done, the decibel levels have been reduced. Going back to the map, I've got a measurement from where a blast is over to Gray Tuck, and I went as far as up the road. I didn't want to pass on anybody's property, but we are about 443 feet away from the blasting area, and as you can see, we're at 47. 47 is less than the sound of my voice. So it was pretty quiet. The next one, if you look at the very next page here, I went to the road, which is down here, again, from the blasting area. I think we are 338 feet away, and that was 54. that was 54, 54 decibels. Still, if you look at that and you compare what it states 54, it's a little louder than a quiet dishwasher, moderate rainfall refrigerator, less than normal conversation. We did go over to Stacy, Stacy Court. I didn't show you a picture of that because it's quiet as a mouse over there. Now, all that being said, I'm not saying my neighbors don't hear me sometimes. But it's it's difficult to know. You know, there are times where I got trucks driving on my yard. We had D H Griffin in there cleaning up our yard for steel. Was it making noise? It was. But not once has a neighbor ever come knocked on my door and said, hey, can you come listen to this? Can you, you know, hear what I'm hearing? Can you sit on my front porch, listen to what I got? Because I would. But, you know, since we've been getting complaints since, what was it, 2021, nobody's ever knocked on my door. All I do is hear from you guys, but I hear every six months. Every time I think I solve the problem, six months later, we got a complaint. Like, okay, what is it? So it's been a little frustrating on my end. Now, that being said, I understand there's been conversations of changing the noise ordinance in Forsyth County, which I'm all for. I got to have a target. I need to know what I got to hit. I don't think I can get less than 40 because I would have to stop talking, which my wife probably would prefer. So, you know, if if the discussion is changing the noise ordinance, I don't think it should be focused at one person or one entity. But there's got to be a way to measure it, measure what the instance is, what time it is, what kind of noise it is, and then for me to be able to mitigate the problem, because I can't chase ghosts. So that's me. I'm open for questions.
Some questions for Mr. Burns. I'll just I'll ask one.
Sure.
And I this I sort of like I've heard a someone had on their phone, you know, their phone, a tape of the sound and a recording. And I'd probably argue that that it's kind of like if you were recording with a decibel reading, sticking your fingernails down a blackboard, the old blackboard, it probably wouldn't register that high. But it is a grating noise. And I can't I can't mimic it, but it's kind of a kind of a noise. And I think it's probably one that is probably very irritating. May not have those same decibel numbers, but it's a pretty irritating noise and just having to listen to that. And I appreciate your openness, although some of the neighbors would claim that that they've gone to to your onto the property and have been kind of asked to leave by those who are there, like, what are you doing here? So and that may have been a different time and whatever else. But I guess there's some belief that it hasn't been quite as open as you have presented today. I just wanted to let you know there is another side to that.
Always, you know, as we like to say, 100% of the truth, 50% of the story, right? So that's what we're here trying to solve. Get both sides of the story, get an understanding what the problem is. The only interaction I had from a neighbor was a guy on Stacy Court was hiding in the bushes harassing my employees, videotape. And that's where the videotape came from before we mitigated, before we had, we used to blast wide open. There was nothing there. And that's where that video came from. So that's not an accurate display of where we are today. You know, the other he was harassing my employees. He called me out, asked or told me that he knew where I lived. I took that as a little bit of a, you know, let's just say, not the best way to handle something. That's the only interface I've had with any of the neighbors. I did, I think we met, was it eight months ago, something like that?
Probably at least.
Met with Mr. Watts as well. You know, and I did what you asked me to do. I went around to the neighborhood, especially on Gracie Court, because they're closer. Or Gray Tuck, not, excuse me, Gray Tuck, Stacy Courts, they're ways away, which I think is where that gentleman lived. I knocked on doors. I didn't really get a chance to hold anybody. I left my card. I haven't heard anything. I did the pictures with that sound, the decibel meter. I did this week during a blasting operation. I did it myself. I'm not saying I don't make noise. It happens. We are an industrial manufacturer. But the blasting operation, we've worked hard on mitigating. We've changed the nozzles out, added soundproof blankets. I mean, we're, like I said, we want to be a good neighbor. I don't want to be a bad neighbor. I want the county to like what I do. I bring jobs to the county, right? I bring recognition. That's a good thing. Having neighbors mad at me doesn't do me any good. So lastly, just for your own records, you can see that we do sound checks. And that's the last three pages. I didn't print all of them. But you can see, we look on a regular basis. It shows the nozzle that we use, what we're blasting, Gray Tuck, which would be the same point where I was at, what that showed up, Stacy Court, and then the 100 feet, basically, we go 100 foot around our operation. And then you can see, north is always loudest because there's no containment. Like I said, that's up towards my office. My office is 300 feet from the operation. I conduct business there all the time without an issue. I'm on the phone. Matter of fact, I go outside and talk on the phone all the time. So I can tell you, I'm here to help solve the problem. But there's got to be a target. There's got to be an understanding. And if there's an odd noise coming out because of one quick operation, I need to know. But somebody's got to tell me.
Got you. Other questions?
Yeah, Chairman, if you don't mind, I do have questions as well, probably a few comments. Sir, thank you so very much for, first of all, being here. We did need to, I needed to hear your side of the story. And thank you. I did find value in the documents that you provided today. And I do believe that you do want to be a good neighbor. One of my questions is, does this neighborhood have an association have? And it doesn't sound like that you guys have mediated. One piece have met with us, and then now you're here meeting with us. Communication is key, right? So if we can get you guys in a room to kind of discuss what's happening and how you can help with that solution or apply that solution to helping the constituents, I think that's can probably be a better measurable outcome here.
I agree 100%. 100%.
Yeah, yeah. So
I'd be happy to do that.
About the association for the community.
Yeah, I don't know that Gray Tuck has an association. I don't know if the other one where Stacy Court is at. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But I would be happy to do that.
Maybe Kyle can help with some of that. But nevertheless, thank you. I appreciate you being here.
Vice Chair Whitman.
Let me say that when we approved this zoning, we approved it that the blasting would be indoors. Had it been outdoors, I would have never voted for it. But we were told that it was going to happen indoors. And that's that's my first.
Actually, that's not 100% correct. The blasting at that time was being done in Guilford County.
I was here at the meeting.
Okay.
I know what he said.
Okay, fair enough.
And then a couple of weeks ago, Minor Barnett, who is the director of the Environmental Assistance and Protection, gave us a report. And one paragraph stood out for me. It said in December 2023, the facility installed sheet metal and sound dampening blankets along the line, fence line. That did not work. It was not sufficiently effective, and it did not work with the noise. And so then, he said, the facility management indicated they were investigating the possibility of using laser technology instead of abrasive blasting. And but said now, it's his understanding that you are no longer considering that idea. Can you tell me why?
Sure. One, the laser technology is not approved for SB 6, which is a requirement by the U.S. Navy on how we prep steel before we paint it. Laser's not acceptable. Two, cost prohibitive. I would have loved to have been there when they tested. They didn't grab me to say, hey, we're testing. You want to come with us? Didn't happen. I would prefer, if they're doing testing, for me to be there so I can see what they're dealing with. I think that's a reasonable request. And I can appreciate that you wouldn't have voted for me to move jobs here. I get it. But I can tell you, I want to be a good neighbor, and I'm willing to solve problems. I solve problems every day. I can't solve phantom problems that is not brought to my attention, that I know specifically what I'm dealing with.
Well, you say you don't hear from anybody except about every six months.
That is correct.
I hear from people about every six weeks.
Okay. Did you ask them to call me?
They have told me that they have called you. I don't know. I'm not get into that. But these folks are desperate. And I don't, I believe what they're saying. I haven't been out there.
So you don't believe me?
I didn't say that. I'm saying the noise is bothering these folks. And they have brought, they have brought information in here to us. They brought their, they have dust problems in their house. They have to close their windows. They can't open their windows. I don't want to live like that. And I don't think you do either.
Oh, I would agree with that.
So I
But that's the first I've heard of that.
That something needs to be done. If you are telling me that you are a friendly person, then something needs to be done for these folks.
Like I said, a problem's got to be presented to me in order for me to solve it. I can't just say, somebody called and said there was a noise. I'm I'm dealing with what I know. If somebody wants to grab me, one of the county people that you're saying is, hey, going out there reading decibels, I'd love to be there. That way I can go, oh, hey, I see this is the problem. I can fix that. But just saying somebody's loud, I can't fix that problem. You're asking me to chase ghosts. I don't want to chase ghosts. I want actual facts. Like we like to say, in God we trust, all others bring data. I brought you data. I need data. I need to know where the noise is, when it is, what time of day, and what the operation is.
Well, certainly, we don't need permission to go to someone's residence or Gray Tuck Drive or Stacy Court and and test the ambient sound and what other sounds that they hear. They've been there. And they keep very good records. They're environmental people. They do nothing but keep data.
I'm all for that. I'm just saying I would like to be there when they do it so I can witness what they're dealing with.
I don't think they have felt invited to to ask you, but if you would like that.
Kyle, have I been very open anytime somebody had a question? Was I not always open, bringing everybody into my office, saying, what can we do to solve the problem? So to say that I have not invited, I take exception to that.
Let's back up. I think what you said was, you would like to be informed when a county person were there testing with sound testing. And now that you have told us that, then they will certainly come to your front door or call
Absolutely.
and let you know. But you've never expressed that you wanted somebody to come get you until today, that I'm aware of. So
In an official capacity, in front of the county commissioners, you are 100% correct.
Well, we
But when the Economic Development Committee comes and the other people that have come from government, I've always welcomed that. I'm like, hey, let's figure it out. Let's solve the problem. There's all kinds of things we can do. I just need to know what I'm solving in order to solve it. If I got to plant bushes or something to keep the dust down, I'm willing to do that. I need to know where the dust is, you know, where it's ending up. I can't just say, well, I got dust over here. I need to know where it is. I think that's a reasonable request.
I'm not disagreeing with that. But we have talked to other people that have had a different impression of your willingness to do that. But you have told us, they can watch this. This is this is on livestream. They can watch the tape. And and we can have Mr. Haney can actually, maybe there is a way to arrange a meeting and where it's mutually convenient. Maybe there's a place out in the neighborhood or out in that, you know, part of the county that we could easily get together for a meeting. I don't know how big it, if you have a conference room in your facility, if you do, that might be a great way to have that conversation. I think that would be good. So maybe it's a matter of picking a date and we can, because as as Vice Chair Whitman had mentioned, we do get a fair number of calls. So we can make sure we can help share that and it take place. But I don't think folks are just making up things either. So as you said,
I'm suggesting that.
Somewhere, it is between here and here, and we need to sort of reach that point and have a good understanding. But I think we'd be happy to facilitate a meeting so that you could share those things and you could hear firsthand their their thoughts about that.
I'd be happy to do that.
That's good. That's good. We'd like for it to end, too. We'd like for this to be everything is great. That's good.
Right. I mean, like I said, the things that we do are mitigating the sound. Doesn't mean I'm covering everything. I need to know. I need to know what, you know, what's loud. I don't think I can get less than 45. I mean, 45 is a quiet refrigerator. 45 is less than what this is.
If you get it to 45, you probably won't have too many complaints. But that's there. But
You know, and all I did when I measured sound, when I went to the closest house and went in between the operation, right? I think, based on what I said here, you can see just around the radius of that, the decibel levels do change. So, one, I'm not going to trespass on somebody's property, go get a sound reading. I would need permission to do that. So, you know, on Gray Tech, the guy up there, maybe he's got a, you know, the direct sound link is higher there. I don't know that. If I could get that information, I can solve the problem.
That's good to hear, solving the problem. Excuse me, Dan.
All right. Mr. Burns, I have a few questions based on some of the information that you've provided.
Sure.
The safe and unsafe decibel levels. Is this an OSHA chart?
OSHA references that chart. That's if you Google sound decibels, they're all very consistent. So OSHA does recognize anything over 70s hearing protection.
So by safe and unsafe, you're talking about what would be of concern from an ear damage level?
Say that one more time.
When you're, when you are handing us a copy of a chart that talks about safe and unsafe decibel levels, that's referring to the risk of ear damage from long term exposure, correct?
I don't think I'm educated enough on hearing to answer that question, to be honest with you. You know, to Mr. Barton's point, you know, it's saying 70, a vacuum cleaner is a safe level. But a vacuum cleaner running eight hours in your ear, I would say, is going to be irritating. You know, so spikes in level, you know, that kind of thing. So I can't speak intelligently about that. I know in our facility, if we've got an operation indoors, that 70 or higher, we require our guys to wear hearing protection. Does that make sense?
Yeah, not actually, not exactly what I asked, but thanks. You referenced your Guilford facility, that you had one, it's closed. Is that correct?
Yeah, we moved our 100% of our operation for Zeith County.
Got it. Did you conduct sandblasting, cleaning at that facility?
Yes, we did.
Was that facility outdoors or enclosed?
It was outside.
All right. When did it close?
When did we shut that facility down?
Yes.
I think 2019, 2020.
Okay. Did you receive noise complaints about that facility?
No, we did not.
So didn't have any contact from the county about that facility?
No, we did not.
All right.
And we did have houses that were just as close. The closest operation actually was, if you're going down 40 in Sandy Ridge Road, there's a Airstream facility there. We did have one instance of dust coming over to there, and we took care of that problem. So typically, when you're talking dust, we do also wind readings. And I don't know what the wind level is. But if it's above a certain point, we don't blast. So
What was the address of the Guilford facility, please?
8511A Norcross Road.
Norcross?
Yep. And that's cold facts.
Thank you. Can you tell us about how far in advance you learned that you anticipate sandblasting operations on a particular day?
Like currently, if we know we're going to blast on a particular day, is that what you're asking?
How far in advance do you know?
I would have to check with production, usually a couple of days. I mean, like, they know if they got something they have to blast, they'll know next week, this week, that they got a blast.
Would you be willing to inform Mr. Haney in advance of? Would you be willing to inform Mr. Haney in advance of day's operation?
Absolutely. Be happy to.
What hour you anticipate they'll start?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah, be happy to.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Any other questions?
You have a question, and I'll just follow up from Dan. What are your hours during the weekdays and on the weekends?
So the indoor operation is 6 to 4, and then we do have a part-time second shift. We blast from 8 to 5. We don't blast early.
From 8 o'clock to 5 p.m.? And the second shift does what?
Second shift's a machine shop inside, so that's all an indoor operation. Yeah. So we've got, right now, because of business and, and just the, the request of production, we did add a secondary shift, but that's all inside.
What's, what's that, what's those?
So that's fabrication and machining?
Hours?
Oh, I think it's 4 to 11.
At night?
Yes. But that's all indoors. We don't blast outside at night.
Okay. And then on the weekends?
Weekend is just typical 6 to 4.
6 to 4 on the weekends?
On the weekends. I don't think we blast on the weekends either.
Is that outside?
No, that's all indoors. The only stuff that we do outside is blasting.
Yeah, what times?
Yeah, from 8 to 5 during the week.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, any other questions?
I'd like to just give you some idea of how I received your comments, Mr. Burns. And frankly speaking, I would hate to be in your position because it seems to me that you're just like us. The problem is, you haven't found the perfect answer. And I'm not sure I've heard it, and I'm not sure I ever, I'm not sure I ever will hear it. But, but what I'm hearing is that you, you're running a business, that you, you have a bad part that is something that even you don't like to do it, but it's got to be done. And if it could be done any other way, you probably would already be doing it. And if you can find a way, you probably will do it. But at this stage of the game, and I know it's, it sounds like fighting words, and I don't mean it to sound that way, but basically what you're saying is, we don't have the perfect solution. Except to say, we're doing everything we can and get used to it. Now, if that's the case, we really knew that going in. I mean, you talk about blasting. It's, it's something that has to be done in many different parts of our society. And if you're going to stay in business, you're going to have to do that there. And if you go somewhere else, you're probably going to run into the same situation that you're running into here. So the question is, what can we do to help facilitate, speed up, or make easier for you and your company to make this happen, other than standing back and saying, well, Citizen A doesn't like it, and Citizen A through Z over here, that whole group of people, they don't like it. So what are you going to do about it? And you, you're aware of that. And if you're aware of that and you're trying everything you know to get it done, I absolutely believe what you're saying. You just have to be the guy that has to stand in front of a group of commissioners who have been elected by the public to stand up for something. And I'm not sure what we'd be standing up for if what you're doing requires blasting. So the question is, and I don't know if you can answer this, and I apologize for even asking it, where do we go from here?
So I appreciate your comments. I would agree with 98% of what you said. The 2%, I would say, I would never just say, we're going, you know, just deal with it. That's not me. That's not who we are. We have an excellent culture at our, at our company. We treat our employees very well. They're the lifeblood of what we do. I couldn't be where I'm at today without them. And again, I got to be a good steward of the neighborhood as well. So, again, and, and really later in my career, is what I do 99% of the time is solve problems. Solve problems with customers, vendors, employees. I mean, that's just what I do. And I'm used to it. And I'm actually pretty good at it. And, and so where do we go from here? I really like Ms. McDaniel's suggestion of getting us together with the neighborhood. I think that's a great idea. When the county wants to do measurements, if I call Kyle and say, hey, we're blasting today, let's get the sound meter out, let's go around, let's go visit, let's get the neighbors if we need to, I'm willing to do that. Because I'm pretty sure the way sound works, I speak, it goes this way. I speak this, it goes this way. Right? So you're blasting, you got, you know, sound waves going all over the place. The point is, I got to put something in to block the sound wave so it doesn't irritate. That's not a solution that is, I think, that can't be done. I need to know where the sound wave is going and where, what they're hearing. And that's what I've always said since day one, is, hey, somebody come knock on my door and say, hey, we're, we're hearing this. And then go, oh, that's this, let's go talk about it, let's figure out how we can prevent it. So that's where we go from here.
Yeah, I live at 211 Harmon Lane in the heart of downtown Kernersville, or I should say uptown Kernersville, the Chamber of Commerce. But it seems like about every morning, every morning, and when I live in Kernersville, I'm close to the regional airport for Winston-Salem, Greensboro, High Point. But every morning, between 6:30 and 7:30, they open up the runways and those big jets take off and go down those runways, fly right over my house. And it, like you said, it's like breathing. You can hear them going over the house, but I can, I don't know if I'm unusual, but I can sleep under those circumstances, knowing that everything is under control, it's safe, it's just part of life, supplier, get used to it. And I am. And when I hear a jet go over my, my house, and it's way up in the air by the time it gets there, I accept that. And is there anything in your mind that says, maybe some of this blasting that people are complaining about is not as bad as they say it is, but it's something to be said, so I'll say it. So I'm not going to say anything about the planes flying over, because I know if they're going to be over my house at 6:30 in the morning, someone's going to New York, going to Washington, and going somewhere. But that airport and what they represent is beneficial to the community. And what you're doing is beneficial to the community. It's just that there's one part of what you do, and everybody says, oh, it's beneficial, but I don't like it. Well, there are a lot of things in my life that I don't like, and I don't try to change it if I know that that's the way it's going to be. So I just mention that because there are con, all kinds of sounds that you can put in your, I don't like it category, but I'm not sure they're all legitimate to the point where it requires the stopping of manufacturing, which is critical to our community, and everything else that goes along with it. And I, once again, say.
I think, Commissioner Plauer, I think we've got, we've got a good next step. We got to get one.
Oh, good. I'll stop.
I appreciate your work.
We'll let the planes land in Greensboro. And we've got, we've got, we've got a step here that we can go forward, and we'll have a meeting, and Kyle can be the facilitator of that. And, and Mr. Burns, we appreciate you coming and appreciate hearing from you, and it was, it was good. Thank you for, thank you for being here.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Kyle has my information. Anybody want to call me direct, email me, what have you, I'm always available.
Happy landings.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I believe we're ready to turn the meeting over to the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. So, but really, the only thing we have to do remaining today is just to kind of finalize this agenda for the May 30th meeting, so I'll go ahead and dive into it. Obviously, this will be the formal meeting next Thursday. The other item we will be submitting, presenting, really to kick off the budget session, the formal county manager's recommended budget next Thursday. So that will be part of that, this meeting as well. All right, so we've got one special resolution, a resolution recognizing May of 2024 as Affordable Housing Month in Forsyth County. And so you'll have folks here to receive that. Approval of minutes for the meeting of May 16th, which?
The minutes went out yesterday.
Yesterday. So you look in your email and you'll see that. We have a wanted budget finance item. It's a resolution ratifying and authorizing a joint application by Forsyth County, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, to receive $3,678,76,466 from the Education Lottery Fund. Adam Fernbach's going to, from finances, is going to review this item.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This item is a resolution and ordinance amendment authorizing a joint application to North Carolina DPI for fiscal 2023-24 lottery proceeds. These $3,676,466 of lottery funds will pay for debt service arising as part of the 2006 Education Debt Leveling Plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Any questions for Adam?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Item 4 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Election Systems and Software LLC for the purchase of ballot on-demand printer system for use by the Forsyth County Board of Elections. Tim Suji is going to come up and review this as he is preparing for the November election.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a contract to purchase and replace our ballot on-demand printer systems. The Board of Elections was recently informed by ESNS, our voting machine vendor, that Oki Corporation, the brand of our current ballot on-demand printers, has pulled out of the market back in 2020 and halted its U.S. operations. So therefore, this will limit our support in terms of maintenance and hardware. And there is a limited stock of available consumables such as toners, drums, and fusers. The alternative to the ballot on-demand printers would be for us to order pre-printed ballots in excess of 110% of the total number of registered voters as prescribed by the State Board of Elections. So the contract is for an amount not to exceed $130,000, which includes the purchase of 40 ballot printers, 20 ballot on-demand system laptops and routers, plus the software licensing for the system. This contract is for an amount not to exceed, again, not to exceed $130,000. The commissioners have approved at their May 2 meeting pay-go funding to be made available for this purchase. I'll be glad to take any questions.
When this was approved back in, originally, I remember we had this, you know, where we went around, looked at all the vendors, right?
Right. That was back in 2020.
And, and I want to make sure I understand, are there sort of one vendors for the printers and on-demand, but then there's another for the other work? Is, is it, are there multiple vendors involved in this?
Not for this. So this.
Not just for this, but I'm talking about the election process. There's a single, they've been the single vendor for every part, component.
So I guess the best way to explain this is, there are multiple voting machines vendors, and those vendors do have their own ballot on-demand printer systems that are tied to the voting equipment. So in other words, the ballots that are produced out of these ballot on-demand printers are specific and, and can only use specific ballot stock that would be able to be used with the current voting machines that we have.
So when we bought this, what did we think would be the current lifetime expect, I mean, this equipment's not, I mean, did we expect this was going to wear out?
We, we did. We, you know, we always, whenever we purchase voting equipment, our hope is to, you know, to, to use it out to its fullest lifespan. You know, that could range between 10 to 15 years. So we had, at the time of the purchase, did not have a clue that this was going to come down, that Oki Corporations was going to pull out and halt its operations.
Okay. I don't want, I, I read the materials you sent, and to be honest with you, I got a little confused with, so who is the vendor of the new equipment that we're, that you're proposing?
Brother, brother printers.
Okay.
So they, they designed and developed a new printer that can be used with the, with the voting equipment, using their software licensing.
That's what I was getting at. We have voting equipment, so this is adaptable to what we have, so we're only replacing the printers.
Just the printers.
And that software.
That's right.
So we're not being high and dry with something that should last 10 or 15 years and it goes away in three years.
That is correct.
So, so this is a part here to do that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm with you. I got it now. Any other questions for Tim? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Anderson's going to come up and review items five and six. Item five's a resolution selecting and authorizing execution of a contract with Arc Studio 7 to provide professional design services for the Piedmont Propulsion Structural Infield Project. And then item six is the guaranteed maximum price proposal, really to kick off the Forsyth County Agricultural Park Complex. And John Nance is there and not James Anderson. James changed. I don't know what happened, so glad to have you, John.
All right. This is where I'm going to use this screen here. So I put a handout to each of you that has the Piedmont Propulsion site on it. First of all, good afternoon, commissioners. Is that coming up? Item four is a resolution to select and award a contract to Arc Studio 7 for the Piedmont Propulsion Structural Infield Project. Arc Studio 7 was selected by an RFQ process formally advertised by City-City Purchasing. Three responses were received, and Arc Studio 7, Moore &amp; Associates, and Structural Solutions PA responded. A selection committee comprised of general services and airport staff identified Arc Studio 7 as the most qualified firm for the project. Staff have negotiated a not-to-exceed fee of $170,000 for basic services, $5,000 for additional services allowances, and 2,000, or 2,500 for allowances for reimbursable expenses. Total fees are not to exceed $177,500. The total project budget is $2 million, with 1.7 million being set aside for construction. The design services represent 10% of the construction budget. Design services include structural engineering, mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, and architectural services for code coordination and life safety systems design. Piedmont Propulsion Systems, PPS, was founded in 1948 and currently has 62 full-time employees at Smith Reynolds Airport. They are the only major propeller MRO firm in the world servicing both government and civilian contracts. Piedmont Propulsion Systems currently leases about 54,000 square feet from the county at 4,400 Lansing Drive. Completing the structural infill will add approximately 12,600 square feet of usable space, allowing Piedmont Propulsion to increase their capacity and provide propeller MRO services at this facility. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
John, do you know what that, obviously, that facility was a very specific use, and so there's a lot of equipment in the ground there and what have you, which obviously makes this more complicated, because you got to, because you're really changing the use of this, I guess, right?
It used to be a conveyor system for chroming of propeller equipment.
Okay.
And there have been many projects brought in front of the board to raise the, the structure up, or to kind of take the structure away. This basically puts a concrete floor on top of that structure to prevent having to take that out and the expense involved. And what we're hoping to do is, if budget allows, to be able to come flush with the surrounding terrace around that, to have one clean surface. If it does not, we would obviously put some ramps in, and it would be kind of a dip down into that system. But we're hoping to be able to have a flush floor system for them to operate.
But really, all of that stuff that we see there is, was part of some production process?
Everything you see there is just the structure that was able to have the crane systems and the conveyor systems to where they could go into the different vats and dip the, dip the propellers and the components in different vats, chrome, paint, you name it.
So there's decommissioning a bunch of systems as part of that?
All that has been taken out. All that's gone now.
Is it?
It's just the concrete structure and the steel structure that were made.
Okay.
All of that is steel?
That is concrete and steel.
I mean, it almost looks like a floor joist that could be wood, but it's, it's all steel?
It's all I-beams, riveted I-beams is what it is.
So is that going to be replaced, or is it, we're going to actually pour the concrete in between those, and it's a matter of?
Directly on top of that.
Right. So, and then there'll be something to bait, some kind of shore it up, a floor of some sort underneath that holds the concrete?
Yes.
Will the concrete get rebarred, stuff in it too?
Yes.
Kind of to make it stronger?
All rebarred.
And then you have to, then you're going to have to support the weight of that with more kind of pillars or supports underneath, or not?
Hopefully not. The design team will kind of figure that out as they go along. But what we are hoping is that steel I-beam structure that is in place now will be able will be able to support the weight of the concrete being added to it with the pans that will be placed on top of that to hold the concrete.
We're looking about six inches thick of the concrete?
That particular span would be about 18 to 24 inches, what we're hoping would be able to come in.
Wait, wait. I mean, I'm talking about the thickness-
I may have a better picture here.
Thickness of the concrete?
If you look, this picture here, this little bit of idea, you can see here at the top-
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I see exactly.
You've got, you've got about-
I got it.
Two and a half, three feet there.
I got it. And the worst case would be where the joists are, you'd have concrete and you may have a ramp down to it.
Yes. Worst-case scenario, we have to do some ramps to be able to access that space.
I see what you're talking about, 18. Well, surely the concrete's not going to be 18 inches thick.
We would like to fill that entire space. If budget allows, we would like to fill that entire space.
So you don't have a void to deal with?
Yeah. The way this floor can be fixed, it'll be, other than the thickness of it, it'd be similar to concrete flooring in buildings. It's multi-story buildings, it's got the deck in it that's similar to whatever deck is. I mean, the, the structure may not be exactly, but they use, to keep the cement in place, Mr. Martin, they use more than rebar. They have to use some kind of pan in there to keep that stuff from dripping through whenever they're pouring.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just like you would see in high rises. But this is going to be a situation where they will have heavy lifts moving equipment back and forth. So the thickness of this slab is actually, it would be beneficial to be able to pour it to the top.
Yeah, I got it. I was doing a little, I'm just calculating the number of cubic yards of concrete you're talking about buying here.
Hopefully you don't want me to do that right now. I'd have to use the calculator and go back to my work station.
I got it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions for John?
It's a great, great project because this, I presume this has been vacant for years and years, and it'll put this space back in production.
Yes. They use the space to capacity, and they are actually working all around that perimeter you see. It's just kind of 2,600 square feet of dead space right there in the middle.
Yeah. So the surface area is 2,600 square feet?
Oh, I'm sorry. 12,600.
12,000, that's what I thought.
12,600 square feet. Sorry.
Big difference.
It's a big piece, big, it'll be a big asset when we get done. That's good.
County ought to get a check mark for this. Keep from tearing down something, fix it, go on. That structure, that structure will be here 100 years from now. Somebody just don't decide to tear it down because it don't look, don't look to suit them.
It's probably going to be so stout that you couldn't tear it down if you wanted to. So anyways. All right. So John's going to take care of item six, which is the, really, kind of the kicking off the building phase of the Forsyth County Agricultural Park Complex. And he's got a presentation to show you, I believe, on that one as well. Chantel is coming to your rescue here.
How do I get the presentation? All right. This is the Forsyth County Agricultural, Agricultural Park Complex. This is the site looking out from the, looking toward Pilot Mountain. And I do believe, well, I'm not 100% certain what the name of that other, Sour Mountain. But it is, this is the tract here. I'm going to read through the project history. Rolling Hills location in Tobacco Bill was selected for the project in 2022. ShellCo was selected by the Board of Commissioners to provide design build services on December 1st, 2022. And the grading phase GMP was accepted on February 5th, 2024. The overall project budget is $20 million, funded from a mixture of bonds, pay-go, and state funds. This is the entry park off, the entry to the park off Doral Drive. This is looking back toward Doral Drive from the highest point. And this is looking back toward Pilot Mountain, Sourdough Mountain, from that same highest point backwards. Here's an overall site plan. Building phases includes construction of 26,000 square foot facility for the cooperative extension, which includes an 8,000 square foot exhibit hall, featuring a catering kitchen, a breakout of meeting spaces, an open equestrian ring, and will eventually have some nature and walking trails. This is a kind of floor plan of what we are doing out there. ShellCo has submitted a guaranteed maximum price of $13,623,459. This includes a 3% design builder fee. Trade packages were competitively bid. ShellCo is projecting at least 12% MWBE participation. Total fees for this design phase, grading phase, and building phase are not to exceed $19,113,299. The resolution also increases the county manager's change order authority from $150,000 to $300,000 for the grading and building phases of this project. And the next several slides are just some renderings that I will go through that we just got yesterday of the up-to-date changes to the building and how this should look once it's in the ground. These are all site views from the exterior.
That metal roof or is that-
That is metal roofing. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Exterior view of the exhibition hall. And we'll move into some interior views. This is the entry vestibule coming in, what would be an information desk. More interior views. Little pantry area for the, for the kitchen, for the exhibition hall. The other side of that where the actual kitchen equipment will be. More close-ups of the kitchen. And this is the exhibition hall. Shown that will- Obviously be able to use for some assembly uses for that, some exhibitions. Here's an overall conceptual site plan showing the parking areas, the main entrance here, coming into Doral, or coming off Doral Drive into the, into the agricultural park.
We can go back real quick to the actual hall?
Say that one more time. I apologize.
Can we go back to the hall?
Yes, ma'am.
And my question while you're going there is, how many is this available to seat? And do these walls divide?
The walls do not divide.
Okay.
And the seating capacity, I'm not 100% certain, but I can get back to you on that. I'm not 100% certain what seating capacity is.
So I'm thinking if you had to rent this space, you have to rent the whole space?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Fair enough. Thanks.
Where's the equestrian ring supposed to be located?
The equestrian ring is hard to see on the information I have, but I can kind of show you on the site map. This area here, just past the event center, is where the equestrian ring, the open-air equestrian ring will end up going. And it, you look, go back to- That is what this represents right here.
Is that design coming along with this or is that going to be later?
That will be another phase. It's not included in this phase.
Is that where the funding starts getting short?
So there'll be an open-air ring that'll just be post that can be the building block for closing in a ring later? But there will be a ring, but it won't be a closed-in riding ring. It'll be just fenced in. It's kind of like at Tanglewood now.
It's got a, it's got a fence there. Yes. It's not a covered riding ring.
So at some point-
It's going to be great.
The plan is to have a covered one.
That is a future phase that, that it was really a product of some-
With bleachers of some sort.
That's right.
Okay.
Eventually, the goal and the concept was to be able to have a facility that we could lease out to folks to be able to come and have equestrian events, which would have areas for the citizens to come sit and watch.
I'm not a horse person, but there are people that is. My horse days ended many years ago.
Damon, I hate you are going to miss this. It looks like a golden opportunity for another Festival of Lights with that entrance way.
Absolutely. Yeah, that is a long entrance. Well, how, in fact, how long is that entrance?
It is, oh, Lord, I just asked ShellCo this question. 2,700 linear feet, I think, is what it is from, from the beginning there. It's a, it's a pretty good way.
It's almost half a mile.
Well, then what's it going to be called if it's going to be, if it's going to be called Agricultural Park? Then will that change the name or add to it if you have lights?
I don't know. We'll have to come up with something.
There'll be a lot of opportunities on this parcel in the future for, to envision and do, do things.
You still be around for advice though, won't you?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you standing in for James. You did a good job. Krista Smith is going to come up and review item seven, which is a resolution awarding contract for the Non-emergency Medical Transportation Services Award. Krista? All right. It's going to be a team effort is what it's going to be.
I'm not Krista, but I'm Marissa. Greetings Chairman Martin, Standing Board Commissioners, County Manager Watts, and other executive county leadership. This is just an FYI, not a new RFP for DSS. However, a renewal of an existing one done on a four-year cycle with the option to extend for one additional year. Requests for proposal were sent out on March 8th, 2024, and posted to city, county, and state websites. Pre-bid conferences were held virtually on April 4th. Question period ended on April 8th. Proposals, proposals were received by City-County Purchasing Department by 12:00 p.m. on April 15th. 10 suppliers provided non-emergency medical transportation services recipient trips and from Medicaid-covered medical appointments as authorized by Forsyth County DSS on behalf of Forsyth County DSS. Proposals were evaluated and scored by four Forsyth County DSS staff members. The county process for the service RFPs require a minimum qualifying factor to be included in all specifications. That allows the scoring, scoring panel and pre-qualifying bidder to arrive at a group of responsive bids from which a selection of the lowest bidder can be made. A pre-qual, a pre-qualification factors questionnaire was included as a mandatory part of the RFP process with the requirement of a completed questionnaire in its entirety. After review of the questionnaires and the proposal to ensure qualifications were met, the scoring was completed. Each one-way flat rate provided various locations listed in the RFP was multiplied by the assigned weight. The weight rates were added in the total of the weighted one-way flat rate for scoring purposes. As a note, trips within Forsyth County represent 80% of the total non-emergency Medicaid transportation trips provided during this fiscal year. After evaluation of those 10 proposals, only five were considered responsible, responsive due to various reasons, including pre-qualification factor questionnaire was not complete, one-way flat rate was not provided, service criteria were not met, and rates were not provided at all. Based on the qualifications required and the weighted rates, the lowest responsive, responsible bidders are as follows. Providence Transportation LLC, Custom, Carolina Customs Transportation LLC, Arch Angels Transport, Inc., Here-To-There, Here-To-There Van Service, and Leon Transportation. Other proposals were considered non-responsible, therefore rejected. During the 2223 fiscal year, our non-emergency Medicaid contract companies were half-provided, oh, um, provided for transportation for 6,966 customers for a total of 75,358 one-way trips, which represent an increase of 80%, 18% from the fiscal year of 2021. The amount approved billing updated to NC Trex for 2023 Due to capacity restraints of each provider, Forsyth County DSS management recommends contracting with five providers for the fiscal year of 2025, in addition to Winston-Salem Transit Authority. Due to the increase in the number of trips provided to ensure timely pickup to our customers to arrive at scheduled appointments, provider availability to wait 10 minutes to accommodate customers with special needs, and the ability to return customers in their homes in a timely manner, it's necessary. The propose, the proposal from Leon Transport, Leon Transport is a contingent plan with a requirement that they add vehicles with wheelchair lifts. They are currently equipped with wheelchair ramps. Given the needs of the customers and the ENNT service our state mandated, mandated Forsyth County is requesting approval to contract with four lowest responsible bidders effective July 1st, 2024, and to contract with Leon Transport at a later date when vehicle requirements are met. Available for any questions.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. A couple of questions. Just how do you, curiosity, how do you, how do you manage multiple providers? I take it you had multiple providers last year, right?
Yes.
So how do you manage them in terms of who you call? Because the cost differential gets pretty high between the one-way trip cost.
Correct.
And I'm just kind of curious, how does that works? How do you manage, how do you actually do it when somebody needs transport?
So we have a non-emergency transportation Medicaid team, a special team assigned to do assessments for each individual. We also reach out to the lowest contracted bidder first. If they can take our beneficiaries to their appointments, that's who we work with. We always try to find the lowest cost. So that team tries to schedule those appointments around who can be picked up at the same time going in multiple directions, so forth and so on.
Do you have a case where we go pick up folks and there's no one there?
Yes, all the time.
And, and that, because I would see that there's reimbursements for those that you pick up.
Right.
From, from Medicaid.
Right.
And I'm kind of curious, if there's a whole lot of those that are happening, then there's no reimbursement and we have the cost. So I'm kind of curious what kind of out-of-pocket costs the county is paying on that.
Well, if they're not transported and that trip is not verified, it can't be reimbursed.
Exactly.
Right.
I'm trying to get at, what does that cost us? When you, because the trip has been, the trip has already been made to get the person.
Right.
And that costs us something. We're going to have to pay the vendor their 41 bucks for the one way to get there.
Correct.
Right.
And then there are disqualifications to that individual if they meet, miss a significant number of trips. They are suspended from non-emergency Medicaid transportation.
I'm trying to get at, how many is significant?
Uh, three.
Three.
Yes.
Just curious. Got it. And do you have any idea why the trip, I mean, we haven't, Medicaid expansion hadn't really kicked in yet. So how did you end up with an 18% increase this year? Yeah, I can, I mean, you don't know. You got to speculate, but why?
Well, Medicaid transportation individuals wouldn't be transported by this non-emergency Medicaid transportation. These are for, these are for Medicaid direct individuals only, the ones that the county are responsible for. Those individuals with Medicaid expansion, they are part of the standard plan. Therefore, Blue Cross-
Won't be a part of that. Won't affect that number.
Right. Correct.
So, so then that back to the question, why do you think it went up 18%?
Our aging population has gone up. Our caseloads in adult Medicaid have increased tremendously, tremendously. And that is a lot of our non-emergency Medicaid transportation.
Got it. Any other questions?
Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do have an attaboy for Marissa. Yesterday, as I treated at, for the, at the doctor's office, I did see the Here-To-There van. And I will just tell, tell you that I sat and watched them be very compassionate with one of their guests, I guess you call them your guest, taking them to the doctor yesterday. So I thought that was really nice and just to see them today on our listing that we're funding. And I don't know these people from a hill of beans, so let me just say that, practice that. But never- that. But nevertheless, they were very kind to the person yesterday, so thank you.
Thank you. I will be sure to pass that on.
Good testimony. Other questions?
Yes. You indicated that you're recommending that we contract with five providers in order to make sure that we have enough people, enough transports available. What's the risk that we'll fall short during the period where Leon is qualifying?
To be honest with you, Commissioner Best, there are times that we fall short now with the four, the only four that we have. And it ends up to us having to, we've had individuals that have had to reschedule appointments because we couldn't get them to transported. If they didn't have a, because we also offer gas cars if they have a family member or friend that can take them. But there are some situations where they're solely dependent upon non-emergency transportation, and it has been a struggle because the transportation vendors themselves are having staffing issues. So it has been a struggle already.
How long do you expect Leon to need to get their vehicles retrofitted with the lift?
In conversations with, I'm standing in for Cindy, because normally she does this. With Cindy, she, they could have it done by July 1st, but if you tell us that we give, we need to give them a date, that is something we can do.
The reason I ask, because we don't want to have more of our patients basically left out because our providers weren't ready. And is there a, is there a sixth provider that you would have recommended had, you know, Leon not been in the top?
There were four last year, so we're increasing that to five by adding that to, adding Leon. So hopefully that will mitigate those issues. There were, there were 10 proposals and five which were rejected due to missing information or not meeting the prequalification bid.
So basically, you're recommending taking the only five that met the qualifications, basically, and Leon only almost met them.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I believe Leon was the lowest one-way bidder, if I remember correctly. No, they were second, second to lowest under Providence.
If we think it will help ensure that they, that they do get it done in time, maybe the deadline would be a good idea.
Okay. We can have, we can definitely have conversations with them about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
All right. Gent item mates, resolution awarding and authorizing issues from a contract for the construction and mounting of a 12-foot walk-around light body, or light rescue body to custom truck and body works. All right. Brock Smith is gonna handle this. He's our fire chief.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. So we bring to you today a resolution for your consideration award contract to custom truck and body works to build and mount a custom 12-foot walk-around light duty chassis, or the body to be mounted to the chassis. Custom Truck and Body Works was our lowest bidder at $174,200. We are adding or asking to add in a 5% contingency for the total amount not to exceed $182,910. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Is this gonna be operated as one of the 09 units, or is this in addition to that?
No, it'll be one of the 09 units.
So this just replaces?
Yes.
Take care of all three units now?
Two, yes.
Two, okay. The two that we didn't have in these light rescue.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brock. All right. Gent item nine, Kimberly Bussey with Budget Management's gonna review its resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Humane Society of Piedmont Incorporated for spay neuter surgeries at the animal shelter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kristen Briggs really wanted to be here with you today, but she got tied up at the animal shelter, so I'm gonna pop over and hopefully be able to answer your questions about this item. This is an amendment in the amount of $20,000 to the contract with Humane Society of Piedmont, Inc. for spay neuter surgeries for the Forsyth County Animal Shelter. This contract was originally approved in January of this year in the amount of $50,000, but as adoptions have increased a little higher than expected, and they have a humane solutions partner that's gonna come into the animal shelter facility that's still getting things ready to go, to be able to offer in-house surgeries. A little extra funding within their budget was needed to get them through to the end of this fiscal year. So this amendment again increases that contract in the amount of $20,000, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have about that.
So at beginning on what, July, we anticipate we're gonna have something different. This has been...
We do anticipate that.
This has been an in-between deal.
That's right.
Yeah, I just had a little concern over 40% increase in a six-month period here, this 40% increase in price.
Indeed.
That's a lot.
Ideally, this company will be ready to go by July 1, and they'll be offering those surgeries in-house for a significant reduction compared to what they're paying for the Humane Society of Piedmont. So ideally, yes.
I hope so. Thank you. Other questions?
To clarify my understanding, Humane Solutions is a different organization from Humane Society.
That's correct.
And is, is Humane Solutions a for-profit or nonprofit?
I believe they're a nonprofit organization.
A nonprofit.
I, they are if they're who I think we're talking about. I just wanted to make sure, since the names were similar, there could be more than one. Thank you.
Yes, sir, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of property matters. Gordon's gonna review item 10, resolution exercising Forsyth County's option to require the City of Winston-Salem to purchase the county share of the Church Street parking deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item involves an interlocal agreement executed between the county and the City of Winston-Salem way back in August of the year 2000 to build a parking deck on Church Street between Fourth and Fifth Streets, a large parking deck, 1,500 spaces. It was to incentivize the construction of an office building downtown back in the year 2000. The parking deck was built by the city per the agreement. It was built and owned and operated by the city. It took approximately two years to complete that. It was finished in the year 2002. The way the agreement worked was that, as I said, the city would operate the deck and they handled all the financing for it. And the county would pay a share of each year's losses, and the losses included the finance costs. So that was a 20-year period to pay off the debt the city incurred to build the parking deck. Over the course of those 20 years, the county paid approximately $7.7 million to the city for the operation of the deck and to pay off the mortgage on it. The way the agreement was written, the city was supposed to notify the county as soon as the financing had been fulfilled, which presumably was in the year 2022. And so county staff has been talking to the city since then. We never received the official notification from the city. But the interesting part of this agreement was that it said, after the financing was paid off, the county would gain a share of ownership of the deck. And that share was based on the county's share of expenses it had put into the deck over the years. That's $7.7 million. The city calculated that percentage as 32.83%, so roughly a third. The agreement stated that if the county wished, it could exercise its option to require the city to buy out the county's interest, so to buy out the county's 32.83%. To do that, there needed to be an independent appraisal to value the entire parking deck. And the city took a while, but they finally did secure an appraisal report. They provided that recently, I believe last month, to county staff. The appraisal report stated that the value of the parking deck was $6.5 million. So the county's share of that would be $2,133,950. And so it's the staff's recommendation that the county exercise its option to be bought out of this parking deck. Parking deck has never made any money, and we don't anticipate that it would make money going forward, so this would be advantageous for the county to be bought out. And the city's managing the property anyhow, so they would continue to manage the property. Happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions?
I just have a clarifying question, Chairman, if I may. Thank you, Gordon, for the overview. Are you saying that we're foregoing the $2 million that they already owe us, correct?
No. What I'm saying is, instead of being a one-third owner of the deck, the city would pay the county the $2 million, 2.1 million, and then the city would be 100% owner of the deck. That's the, that's staff's recommendation.
That's what I wanted to come clarify. Thank you. Okay, that was helpful.
Just briefly, is there a, for want of a better term, statute of limitations period for us to exercise this, or can we do it whenever we're ready to do it?
There does not appear to be, but there's no real advantage in waiting, but...
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right.
Very good. Gent item 11 is the other property matter. It's a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by public electronic auction utilizing liquidity services. You might want to give them an update on how many hits we've gotten on our Rogers Auction website. I looked at it last night. With 571 items you can buy at the old courthouse.
Well, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'll start with a quick infomercial. Come own a piece of your courthouse. Our auction is live, and it will be live until May 29th. As the manager says, we have over 500 items for sale, and they are all very valuable. And we are looking forward to seeing everyone's bid. There's actually a showing this afternoon. If you have nothing else scheduled, please come down to 200 North Main Street and walk through the Hall of Justice, and you can see these lots for yourself. And there, a lot of them do have bids already this morning.
And I had a few questions. Item 311 or something was a seven-bottle wine cooler. So whoever at the courthouse had, maybe they put bottled water in their wine cooler in their office, I don't know, but...
We begged and pleaded for folks to come and take their stuff out of there, but when they didn't, it became ours. It became yours, and it's for sale.
It's a lot of stuff. I gotta say, I think Kirby and staff's done a great job on, literally, we're making it so that people can take water fountains off the wall, if they will, too. So it's, it's really interesting. Should, should, should really clean that place out, so.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, as the board is aware, one of the responsibilities of General Services, sort of what we're talking about here, is to manage the county's surplus property disposal process. Our goal is obviously to reuse surplus in the organization. We believe the more we can reuse, the less we have to buy. In terms of process, items have low reusability or in low demand in the organization are set aside generally for quarterly sale. The items attached to your resolution appear to be surplus under that criteria to the needs of the county. The staff does recommend selling them via public electronic auction using the GovDeals Auction Service. If approved by the board, the items attached to the resolution will be available for viewing by appointment only, starting May 31st and running through June 14th. And folks can do that by contacting property management at 336-703-2232. And the GovDeals Auction, where you can actually bid on those items, will be open June 10th through June 24th. So in summary, staff recommends that the board declare the items attached to the resolution a surplus and authorize their sale via public electronic auction using the GovDeals Auction Service. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
Questions for Kirby?
Any radio and television sets in the inventory?
There are some TVs at the Hall of Justice, your official courthouse televisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. The last item, just two reports, fuel surcharge franchise report and the April 2024 contribution base benefit cap report. That is all I have. Mr. Chairman?
All right. We're done.
Happy Labor Day.
Yeah. Memorial Day.
I mean, Memorial Day.